Good evening. Welcome to the September 19, 2024, meeting of the Mount Juliet Municipal and Regional Planning Commission meeting. Thank you all for your patience as we get organized and get ourselves going in here today. Always great to see a full crowd here tonight. As we begin our meeting, one of the things that not a lot of people are aware of is that in order to serve on this board, we are required to have continuing education. And as such, last night, we, since our second night in the road to be together as a commission, because we had our continuing education last night, held over at the city's Public Works Building. And gotta say, been a part of a lot of them. It was a, it was a great meeting, great discussion, great items came apart. And really, the focus was teamwork, building together, proper planning, how to plan, how to work together, how to coordinate. We learned a lot also from our fire department. They were part of speaking. Really, kind of the focus of our continuing education last night was the effects of the decisions that we make as a planning commission upon our city, and then as well, the effects of the decisions as they affect staff and their ability to monitor and maintain what we do. So it was a welcome training session last night. We were there till late, started early, had a wonderful dinner. And with that, I also gotta say, massive coordination and thank you to staff, particularly Jill and your team, Tyler, Kenny, Jennifer Hamblin, John. Shane was there. I mean, you guys, everything that y'all do, our mayor was there, city commissioner. So just a welcome opportunity to learn more and ultimately try to refine your craft so that you do it a little bit better. And thank you all very much for what you did for us last night. With that being said, I do want to announce, because we do have one member absent right now. So in regards to a quorum, the presence of five members of the commission shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. Chairperson may at his or her discretion wait up to 30 minutes after the scheduled meeting time for a quorum to be present. In the event that a member is required to leave a meeting prior to adjournment and the departure causes a loss of quorum, no further official action may be taken until a quorum is restored other than an adjournment. A majority vote of those commissioners present, and in no case less than four affirmative votes, shall be required to decide any item of business requiring action by the commission. With that being said, we will move on with our agenda tonight. First item up is to set our agenda. I am not aware of any changes, adjustments, amendments. Seeing none, we'll set our agenda as stated. Next item up is our staff report. And who wants the microphone first? John?
I'm gonna use this time to introduce Sam Samantha Burnett over here. For those of you who have not met, Sam is the new city attorney, and she comes from us from Nashville Law Firm, where she represented different Tennessee municipalities on liability issues, including Mount Juliet. And prior to that, Sam was a police officer and a firefighter in Michigan. So please welcome Sam.
Wow, welcome aboard. We wish you all the best. Jill?
I just want to kind of echo your comments about the meeting we had last night. Actually, that was probably one of the largest attendees or attendance we've had at a meeting. We had 32. We only missed a couple of staff members, a couple of commission members. Hate they missed out on such a good meal and a lot of good fellowship and communication among everybody. We are preparing for next year's meeting. We'll probably try to do it around the same time, but I promise you, we will not do it the day before planning commission meeting. And my apologies to everyone, because we have suffered as well because of that. So don't know how that happened, but I will give you my guarantee, it will not happen on the week of planning commission. So we are very excited about that. If y'all have any recommendations or items that y'all would like for us to look into, or discuss, or anything that y'all feel that we could do to be better at that, please bring it. We would love to hear it. Thank y'all for attending.
Wonderful. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Shane, Public Works?
I also want to thank Planning as well for putting on an excellent training last night. It was very fun, very knowledgeable, and very enjoying. Couple of updates from the Public Works side. Our new traffic signal is in operation at Golden Bear Gateway and Division Street off the, at Division. So that went on, I think went live last week. So let our citizens know about that one. And we've also got another traffic signal under construction at Golden Bear and Volunteer right beside 711. So those projects are going on. And probably have had residents notice, and we did a video with Director Lee, Parks and Recreation. We ran into an issue on our Stoner Creek Interceptor project for wastewater upsizing, going from a 24-inch to a 30-inch sewer line that ended up having to hand dig a tunnel underneath North Mount Juliet Road because of a utility conflict. So we got pushed back six to eight weeks. So that project resumed. The contractor's back in town. We'll be restoring Robinson Park. I think they're gonna be starting next week. So that project will be wrapping up by November, probably into December a little bit. So with that, that's all I've got tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much. Next item up will be our citizen comments. At this time, we'll take citizen comments. The public is welcome and encouraged to make public comment about any item on our agenda. There will be two opportunities for you to make comments. You may speak now, or you may speak when the item is presented to the planning commission. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. One of the things, we got a lot of people here, we want to hear from you. If you come to the microphone, I do set a little timer up here. If you see me kind of raise my hand at you, that is kind of your indication that you're down to your last 60 seconds on that. So if you don't mind, try to summarize, because be mindful and attentive of the group that we have here to with us tonight. And that allows everybody to speak. And another point of clarification, when we do have a large crowd, I like to say, because some people get fussy or mad at me, the opportunity is to speak now, or when that item is presented. So it's one or the other. It's not, we're gonna speak, we're gonna say a little bit now, then I'm gonna say a little bit when it's presented. It's one or the other. So either which one. So my apologies if you try to do both and you fuss at me and I don't let you speak. So with that being said, name and address for the microphone, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm Chip Ashley, 573 Montrose Drive, Mount Juliet. With Kim Lee Horn representing Philip Edison, that is the developer of consent item 6G, Providence Commons Phase 2. We are, my client is requesting to be removed from the consent agenda and deferring to next month as that planning commission item.
And that is item 6G?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I ask you, York Road question. Item on the consent, the Ace Hardware, does it's, do I speak now, or is it gonna be later?
I would encourage you to speak at the later item. The first one is a plat for the property. The other one will be kind of where we get into, I would speak, or encourage you to speak on the site plan, which would be 8A.
Eight, I was looking there. I saw it on the consent agenda, so.
Yes, we got a, the first one is just for the plat, and the second one is where we kind of dig into the bones of what we're gonna see potentially on that site. So I would encourage you definitely on 8A. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Eskew. Any additional citizen comments at this time? Seen no additional citizen comments. We'll move forward with our agenda. And for the record, one of our ordinance changes does require any item that needs to be deferred for the representation to come to the meeting and defer it in person. So with that, I'm gonna reiterate that for the record tonight. That was a request for deferral on what was item 6G, which fell underneath our consent agenda. Item 6G is to review the site plan for Providence Commons Phase 2, located at 671 through 673 South Mount Juliet Road. That item has been deferred. If you're here about that item, that most likely means that we will hear it next month. So next item up falls underneath our minutes approval for the August meeting. Any typos, changes, adjustments? Seeing none, looking for a motion in regards to that item on our agenda?
I'd like the motion.
It's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against, abstentions. So approved. Next item up on our agenda falls underneath our consent agenda. I'll begin with item 6A, Sewer Letter of Credit, number 20224910 for Providence Central. Adams Lane realignment in the amount of $215,490 can be released. Item 6B, Development Letter of Credit, number 55111137 for Bradshaw Farms. Off-site road improvement, Vineyard Road, in the amount of $36,252.07 can be released. Item 6C, which is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners, a resolution adopting a plan of services for the property known as Whispering Meadows, located Zero Ritter Drive, MAP 076, Parcels 021.02 in Wilson County, Tennessee, located within the city's urban growth boundary. Item 6D, review the final plat for Willow Landing, Phase 2, located off Maze Chapel Road. Item 6E, review the final plat for Wintry Pines, Phase 2C, 4A, 5A, 6A, and 7A, located off Wintry Club Drive. Item 6F, review the final plat for Waterford Park, Phase 3, located at 1367 South Rutland Road. Item 6H, review the preliminary plat for Elders Ace Hardware, located at 10645 Lebanon Road. Item 6I, review the zoning ordinance amendment to Section 3-103.37A, Commercial Activities, Entertainment and Amusement Services, limited seating Begin with planning. John, Jill?
I'll just recommend approval with all the conditions listed in the report.
Wonderful. Shane, anything additional from Public Works?
Ditto with planning.
Wonderful. Got a couple of little side notes real quick as we open this up for discussion. One is, can request, I know that we really can't enforce this, but I'd love to add as an additional comment to 6D, and that is to request decorative lighting at the entrance for Willow Landing off of Maze Chapel Road. Rather dark in that corridor, it would be nice to provide a little light at their entrance if possible. I know we're only seeing it final plat, so understand, limited, and that is within our UGB and not monitored by the city. The other one is, I'd like to also add the note that item 6H, which is to review the preliminary plat for Elders Ace Hardware, located at 10645 Lebanon Road, that should the planning commission choose to accept the consent agenda, that approval was contingent upon the site plan approval. Further questions, comments, discussion from the commission? Seeing none at this time, I'd like to call for citizen comments. Anyone wishing to make comment about any item on our consent agendas, welcome and encouraged to do so. And please go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Zero Winslow Drive, Kelsey Glenn. I just wanted to kind of address, as you guys are once again reviewing some resolutions involving the Whispering Meadows project. I see we're talking about plans for services. I know previously you've had negative recommendations to the planning, to the city commission. Just a reminder, as we're discussing the services, I want to reiterate and put on the record that, speaking for the majority of our community, the biggest concerns that we have is the safety of the community and the size of that road. The width of that road was not designed to be a through street. Both the width and the length of the road has a limitation to the number of houses designed for it. There is a big concern within the neighborhood, especially for emergency services. We've had a number of situations previously where we've had emergency vehicles that couldn't even get around the bend on some similarly sized roads that had to make turns all the way around to get to some houses that were in need of that help. And there is a further concern that we have with a lot of the school buses and that, that's also feeding that area. We have a very large young population of students in our school systems, and we are constantly working with the police force. Fortunately, they're helping us out. We've already got, we think, too many students that are already being fed out of there as it is. And I know that's not necessarily part of the service plan, but we already do think that where we're at with the size of the roads we have and the traffic we have through there, that that is potentially a safety hazard for our neighborhood. And we'd like to have that taken into consideration by the city planning commission when they're looking at the entire process of approving services. Likewise, I know you guys are aware of this, it does look like there was already utilities that were already set up blocking that area. So it does appear that that was intended to be a cul-de-sac. And I do believe that there's something in our bylaws that indicated that something designated as a cul-de-sac is not intended to be a drive-through. And I do think as part of one of the original conditions when this came up, it was suggested to utilize where they had access to John Wright Road. If there's any conditions going forward, I would suggest trying to find another route other than using Ritter Drive as the sole access to this property.
Yeah, my name is Carl Bonert. I live at 6017 Whitworth Drive in the Kelsey Glenn subdivision as well. And I'm an ordinary citizen, no expert, just, I am seen with my own eyes in our subdivision. Is, as this gentleman said here, I'm looking out my window at 8:30. I'm seeing children sitting on the curb waiting for the school bus to come. We're gonna add more houses to that subdivision when the services that are there cannot meet the numbers that we have already in that subdivision. Also, we've had ongoing issues that are finally resolved as far as drainage in the subdivision is concerned, sinkhole problems, major ones that have taken years to get resolved. The property where this Whispering Meadows is to be put is much lower than the majority of the subdivision. I will guarantee you, there are going to be drainage and sinkhole issues in that area. And I don't think the city of Mount Juliet was much help in getting our subdivision resolution to the problem that we had that has taken years to go through. Maybe there's a new department I'm unaware of that will contribute financially and otherwise to help resolve those sort of things in the future. If not, I would suggest not putting that subdivision there. Thank you.
Seeing none, we will adjourn our agenda. Take down any other planning commission meetings that will be held in public hearing. Any other public hearings in regards to our, the, 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 is the resolution adopting a plan of services for the property known as Whispering Meadows, located at Zero Ritter Drive, MAP 076, Parcel 021.02 in Wilson County, Tennessee, located within the city's urban growth boundary. Item 6D, review the final plat for Willow Landing, Phase 2, located off Maze Chapel Road. Item 6E, review the final plat for Wintry Pines, Phase 2C, 4A, 5A, 6A, and 7A, located off Wintry Club Drive. Item 6F, review the final plat for Waterford Park, Phase 3, located at 1367 South Mount Juliet Road. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to any one of those items during the public hearing is welcome and encouraged to do so. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, we'll close our public hearing, reopen our planning commission meeting, and at which time, I'm looking for a motion in regards to the items on our consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda with Bill Palmer.
Second that. It's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against, abstentions. So approved. Next item up on our agenda falls underneath appointments. It's item 7A, is review the appointment of one planning commission member to a steering committee for the development of the city's roadway safety action plan. Shane?
Heard of Todd as he's sitting on this committee.
Right. Todd, please.
Yeah, so this committee is overseeing what's referred to as a Safe Streets for All Action Plan. This is a plan being funded by federal dollars, no state involvement, actually. We have an engineering firm under contract, Kim Lee Horn, who's already started work. But part of the requirements of the grant is local leadership involvement. We have a council member on the, on the committee, but we are also requesting a planning commissioner on the, on the committee as well. The time commitment's pretty minimal. The meetings are all during the day, if you can find an hour. The meetings are either going to be here in the city, at the Public Works Office on Clements Road, or virtual, depending on the needs of the meeting. And really, we're looking for a planning commissioner who's willing to assist in our public outreach and assist in identifying problem areas where safety needs to be prioritized on the streets within Mount Juliet.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's exciting. That's, I've been here a long time. It's the first time I have seen any request or any item like that. We formed some subcommittees for some things going on in my tenure, and it's pretty exciting. I'd like to make a recommendation, I guess, right off the bat, and would recommend Vice Chairman Rast for that role, kind of in his wheelhouse of the daytime paying job, and kind of understands roads and traffic and things like that. I did have an opportunity to speak to Vice Chairman Rast, and I believe he'd be willing to serve. Any additional appointments or recommendations as far as that goes? So, yes, please.
I was gonna nominate Preston George, but I have no problems with what you said about either one of them.
Yeah, wonderful.
Yeah, I know. Well, you, you got it.
Yeah. We can, yeah. I was gonna say, paper, rock, scissors doesn't qualify here today. That's fantastic. So not seeing the formalities of something like this, it's just kind of, do we need to vote on that? Or we just say, he's willing to accept and we're good with that? I guess, first item for our city attorney, does that, all we gotta do is really appoint to that? And it sounds like everybody's agreement. Should I vote on that?
It doesn't hurt to vote, so we can go ahead and vote.
There we go. Let's, because it's an official item on our agenda, let's call for citizen comments. Anybody wishing to make comment on this one is welcome and encouraged to do so. Come to the microphone, name and address for the record, or even if you got questions about the grant. Wonderful. With that being said, I'll make a motion to appoint Vice Chairman Rast as our appointee for the city's roadway safety action plan. Uh-oh, doubling down over here. I'm gonna let y'all figure out that. So that's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against, abstentions. Welcome to the committee. We look forward to hearing back. Yes, yes, exactly, exactly. All right. Our next item on the agenda falls underneath the site plan. It's item 8A, is review the site plan for Elders Ace Hardware, located at 10645 Lebanon Road. Jill?
Thank you. This submission is for 10645 Lebanon Road, which is property that is just to the east of York Road subdivision. They are actually, with the preliminary plat you just saw, was for five lots to be carved out of that approximately 8.17 acres. This specific site plan is just for Lot 1, which is going to be for, as I said, Ace Hardware that's coming in. This is a permitted use within the district. They are permitted by right with the zoning. The proposed building is approximately 22,925 square feet, and it will also have outdoor garden center and greenhouses. They have a couple of waivers, variances that they are requesting. The first one is for the request to emit a type D landscape buffer. Under our ordinances, we do require this type D buffer, because it does a butt residential to the north, which is currently a Wilson County zoned, low-density residential property. So staff does not support the emission of that buffer. They also are requesting a commercial design waiver for the masonry facade materials. Essentially, they want to allow no less than 50% brick, but they also want the availability to have 50% towards secondary materials, which is shown throughout the elevations. Staff is in support of that. The elevations do look good. It would be conducive to the area, and it's also befitting this type of development as well. So staff does recommend approval of this Lot 1, subject to our conditions.
Wonderful. Thank you. Shane, anything for Public Works? Excuse me.
One comment I want to point out is, due to the location of this site, creek runs through it, development's not proposing detention, which, as it sits, detention could be a detriment as it will hold water back during the free-falling events. So we've asked the engineering consultant to provide us data and calculations for analysis, construction plan review, to confirm that assumption. And we'll be measuring, or we'll be analyzing and making recommendations to ensure that anything downstream of this development, per the code, will not be adversely impacted. They're also proposing, we also want to make a general note that there is a 100-year flood plain within the site. Any work within that 100-year flood plain shall be submitted and approved by FEMA before grading activities commence. Todd, do you have anything? That's, those are just a couple of notes we have, but we do recommend approval with all of our conditions listed.
Wonderful. All right. With that being said, questions, comments from the commission? I know I got a bunch. I'm just trying not to talk first. All right, let's, in the meantime, as we get going, let's go and ask for representation on this project, because I feel some of the things I'm gonna ask are gonna probably need answers out there. I guess, back to Shane real quick. Never seen one not require detention or anything like that. If it's noted that they are required to do that, would that be something, no, it's in a pud either, right? So would that be something that would kick back to the planning commission? I don't know that, because this is being developed underneath base zoning, not underneath a pud, correct? So it's a straight zone, probably the third that I've seen in my 20 years up here. With that, I know it's a little bit different than the way we handle a pud, but would that not kick in some kind of a major amendment for the plat and allow us to see it if they had to do some type of detention?
I wouldn't think so because of the unique site conditions presented. But I would have to defer to planning if that type, if that constitutes a major amendment, because the code is, to my recollection, the code does have stipulations in it where detention is not necessarily required for water quality. They still have to do, they do, they, they still have to provide water quality, but studies can, the drainage report can show that detention could be worse off for properties downstream. So Jackson Hills is an example, since the creek runs through there, there was no detention provided in that subdivision. And there's probably a couple of others around town. So there is precedent where developments have not had to provide this, but it's simply an engineering judgment and data-based decision. but it's simply an engineering judgment and data-based decision.
Okay, fair enough. I guess the rest of mine will be over here, so name and address for the record. Couple here, Joe, why are we not, I guess it would be considered your Lot 5? Why are we not showing connectivity to the Lot 5, which would be the easternmost parcel in the plat? It looks like we have common ownership, yeah, the kind of odd, I'm gonna call it Idaho or something?
One of the, one of the conditions on the preliminary plat, perhaps, or in the report to add that. I think we're, we're more than happy to add that.
Okay, I got a little exhibit that I'll give to staff when I'm done on my plan. And just as an FYI, it just shows a connection to Lot 5 right there, as you come in the main drive aisle off of Lebanon Road, that lines up with whatever that property number is there to your left, that it would, to the west, it would line up to the east. And then as well, flattening out that radius turn on the east side of the development, straightening that out, kind of creating a four-way right there, which would lead you to another access point to Lot 5. And then, at the end of a hammerhead or the stubout right there, that also showing another potential connection point back there to Lot 5. So kind of a three-access point, or conceptual, I guess, since we're not seeing anything there. As this were to develop out, the, kind of the triangle in what I'm gonna call the northeast portion of it out there, it looks like your road frontage lot, kind of makes sense of how that would, could look at some point, but that other piece to the northeast in it, what is, is that just, we're gonna maintain the woods? We're not gonna get in over there?
Here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that's strictly land swap, kind of purchase deal to lay some slope back, preserve some woods against the neighbors, eliminate the need for a large retaining wall.
Perfect, okay.
Preserve as much as we can.
So you guys aren't gonna even get in there and whatnot?
No, sir.
Guys, I agree with staff too on the, the buffer. If we don't grant that waiver, how would that affect this plan?
The D allows a 20-foot buffer with a, with an opaque fence, so we would replant whatever we disturbing at a wooden fence.
Yeah, it looks like it's got a nice, I'm more worried about the tree line being preserved than I am the fence being in there. And that's kind of my kicker, is try to preserve those trees, is that buffer back there? Because should this be approved, I can see this as a terminus point for anything commercial.
Yes, sir.
Right there at that corner.
We're, you know, five feet off the property line on that side, so anything in the, in the fence row, for sure, is gonna be preserved, and then we would replant.
Okay. Delivery trucks coming in and out, looks like a little bit of a challenge. Have you guys done your, your site through on this? Particularly, you're, like, your dumpster's gonna have to turn around in your loading, unloading area, and where you have queued for, see if I can read it, it's small, the storage, external storage area, we'll get into that in a minute, but it looks like a interesting movement for your dumpster to get in and out, as well as an interesting movement for, and I, I think that removing that radius out there will help your, looks like that's probably where your delivery trucks are gonna come around, as they come in off Lebanon Road, hang that right, come to the rear of the potential building back there. I think that getting rid of that radius would probably help some of that, or I hope that it helps some of that. But those delivery trucks, 18-wheelers can get around this thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Where, where will, I'm assuming that you guys are gonna have some kind of monument sign or whatnot? Where's that gonna be located?
I'm looking, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay.
My project manager is on vacation this week.
Don't worry. You can get back to me on that one. So I got a suggestion right there, because I always think this, this looks good when we do this. And not that, I'd encourage you to work with staff on, on the design on this, because it would kind of open up at least the mouth or the connection to Lebanon Road. Some type of a raised median, landscape median right there, to divide your incoming traffic with your outgoing traffic. Set it back with the possible opportunity of having your signage lie within it, out of your sightlines, whatnot. I think that'd make for a tasteful-looking development. As I say, with some of our neighborhoods, it'd be nice to also have a little bit of decorative street lighting up there at the entrance. I do think there's streetlights on Lebanon Road at that point, if I recall correctly, but love to just make sure that we're lighting this area up. Previously had a, a comment to make sure that we're completing the sidewalk, but drove by, actually drove onto this site today. The sidewalk on the other side of York Road, it looks like we're gonna have connectivity down Lebanon Road to the sidewalk, to the bridge, depending upon the future uses of the parcels right there. We do have our Little League Park, and would like to make sure we maintain and create walkability from one to the other, should any of these other parcels develop and be a desired use for, for the attendees down there to Little League Park. I know staff made mention of this, one of my biggest concerns are your, your trailers, particularly fronting York Road over there, for outdoor storage, outdoor sales, things such as that. Count me as not a big fan of those, they're rarely maintained. They, if you're selling wheat straw or, or cedar shake, or whatever you're selling in there, they're usually also a great place to house your snakes, your mice, and other items such as that. So I don't know that I can support anything happening over there to the west of this site with all that outdoor storage, outdoor sales. If it were gonna be anything, it's gonna need to be constructed of the primary materials of the building to screen and buffer that, rather than 18-wheeler trailer's gonna back up and sit there until it rusts. I think there's a note in staff comments about enclosing the propane tank or the propane fill area, or at least some kind of a screening to match the exterior facade. Agree with staff, staff made the comments, so I'll let you guys work on that, additional crosswalks or whatnot throughout it. Sketched a couple potential on here that, that drew my eye near to it. And so again, I'll show this to staff, and you guys are welcome to work that out. Do want to say, because you've probably heard me say enough, Joe, definitely appreciate the crosswalk, the painted crosswalk down the front of this building, connecting the perimeter, furthest perimeter parking, south perimeter parking to the front of the building, and allowing a potential safer way to get in and out through the site. So probably got tighter here, me say, add, add paint and crosswalks to these sites. I think I got everything, let me make sure. Oh, do want to add, make sure we add a note that all construction traffic to become off the proposed entrance or construction entrance, if desired, off of Lebanon Road, and keep construction traffic off of York Road. And also another note to make sure that erosion control measures are not located within the buffer, erosion control measures are located outside the, the buffer. Those would be mine, and should we get to that point, I'll be happy to summarize those to keep up with them. Ms. Johnson?
I did want to mention, when you brought up the issue of the sign, your recommendation of putting it in the raised crosswalk at the beginning, they will need to request that through this site plan, because otherwise, it's not allowed in the ordinance. Because that would be a developmental pylon or monument-type sign. And typically, they are only allowed per lot. So each lot would be allowed up to two monument signs, provided they're 200 feet apart. But in order to have a developmental sign that's not on a particular lot, it would need to be approved through you all.
Your guys' preference is gonna be towards that then, Joe? Because obviously, then you only get two signs on this site versus a developmental, potential developmental sign. Is that something that you guys would desire?
We would request one somewhere near the connection.
Okay.
Maybe not define it as being in a, in a large section, but at the connection to.
I'm good with that, okay. So we just need to make that as a condition, and whether or not it's in there, if that comes to fruition or not, or located to the east or to the west of the entrance, you know, as long as it's tasteful and correct. Further, Commissioner George?
Question for staff, West Wilson Utility District's comment 2, any concerns with that? Looks like they're wanting to meet, has there been discussions about the water line and it needing to be moved?
That would be between the developer and the utility district.
All right. Any discussions with West Wilson?
Discussions have started, yes, sir. We generally like to get through this meeting, see if things are gonna move around, and then we'll finalize a route with West Wilson.
Joe, is an entrance on Lebanon Road lining up exactly with Park Glen and that?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought, I was, I need a magnifying glass for some of this.
Beats the plans, and when I first started here, we all had the full 36-inch set that's rolled up, so it's like a Santa's Christmas when you get your package delivered. Further questions, comments?
So you, you wish to?
No.
Share it this time?
No, as, as always, we appreciate staff working with us. This is a, you know, a lot coming in right there, but I think we managed to work everything out. Sounds like the variance for the, eliminating the buffer requirement to the north is a non-starter, so we're happy to remove that. But I would request your consideration on the material variance for the building, as you heard, some staff is in support of that. So can answer anything else y'all may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, with that being said, we will open up at this moment to citizen comments. Any citizens wishing to make comment, welcome, we encourage you to do so. On the microphone and name and address for the record.
Don Eskey, 101, 115 York Road. Who am I concerned, we, we on the property to the north of this, all the way behind it. And the landscaping buffer has been a concern of ours, apparently it's gonna, you're not gonna, without a variance, we're gonna have the landscaping buffer, is that our intention look like?
It would be my opinion personally.
Yeah, that's, we, we're very much in favor of retaining that landscaping buffer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on our backside there. And I talked with Joe a little bit earlier, the lighting, he said will not be a problem. With the ballpark, we get lights in the house, in the ballpark. I can work in my field at night without lights on my tractor, we get that much light in ballpark. Believe it or not, we do. So we, B7, there's a regulation, it can't be just very minimal light get past the edge of the property.
Yes, sir.
So that is a concern. What's the water line? He said that our water line comes direct from a three-inch line, better get from the highway almost up to our driveway. It's not connected to the seven-inch line. And Joe tell me that they're not gonna disturb that line that goes to our two houses.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and he's, and of course, the runoff is a problem. We get, when the big rains get to ballpark, we get within two inches of the bottom of our floor joists in our house. So anything that can be done to retain water or keep water off of there, if Joe tell me it's better to get their water off and not have detention, which is a new thought to me, we'd like to do anything we can to keep the drain, the runoff under control, however, however we do it. But we get it down there, and you get scared when you get walking inside your house, and it's that much blow your floor joists. And it's been that way three times. So anything that can be done with Public Works, maybe you stick to talk with them, but anything to work on that? So that's a concern, and I've talked to Joe about some other things, landscape. It's, it's, it's a big thing, and the other things, he asked me, the internal things, a four-way stop, he says it's internal, you don't want to stop traffic on York Road.
They'll have a stop sign at that connection, yes, sir.
I mean, I.
Oh, no, 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 York Road.
York Road not be have a stop sign, a stop sign entering from this development to York Road.
Yes, sir.
That should be, yes. Those are the main things, and seeing where, apparently the right-of-way for York Road is gonna be extended to the east of York Road into this development, which is step comment number 19.
So, had to let Ms. Johnson speak to that?
Okay. We were just requesting enough right-of-way to meet our 50-foot right-of-way section.
Okay.
No improvements are recommended at this time, no?
Okay.
Okay, they're just, well, York Road won't be any wider in that first section years ago, that, on, on either side, which wasn't, was not us, either the place, would not let it be widened. One guy did on the, on the west side a little bit. Is it gonna be widening at all right there from the highway to the city limits, or just gonna stay like it is? Even though you have right, may have more right-of-way.
Lebanon Road or?
No, York.
I don't think there are no improvements to York Road.
Okay.
Okay.
No, they didn't need any.
Yeah, yeah.
Not until Yorkshire gets built.
I got, are you finished, Mr. Eskey?
Almost, I think, we, I talked to Joe some beforehand for some of my questions.
I got a question for you, actually. Because we've had many things, you've been up here, been so many years in Mount Juliet, all your years being right there on York Road, we've been back and forth with so many different things on York Road. Obviously, I've expressed my concern up here, and main one with the things we have seen on York Road, and that's the flooding that happens up there. This obviously shows, if you've seen this plan, it shows a connection to York Road through this parking lot, and then back to Lebanon Road. Based upon your, what you've seen in your history on York Road, would that access point on York Road allow you guys a way out if York Road, Lebanon Road is flooded?
In theory, but it wouldn't, our driveway will flood long before the ballpark or York Road.
Okay.
Our driveway be that deep in water before York Road floods. You could walk out.
Give you, give you a little bit better opportunity to get back to, or more importantly, get emergency services in there, should they be needed.
To, it can't get, our driveway, it's gonna be waist-deep on our driveway.
Jeez.
At that point, when York Road floods and the ballpark floods, it is anywhere from five feet to waist-deep on our driveway.
Up to your house, or, or York Road being the same thing?
Sir.
York, York Road being the same thing, or just your driveway?
Our driveway floods a long time before York Road does.
Okay.
The ballpark and York Road flood about the same, about the same elevation.
But all your, I mean, because all your neighbors have been here from York Road.
They could get out and in, we couldn't.
Okay, but it, it would help, the opportunity to get emergency services closer to either you and your family, or?
They could get closer.
Okay.
Yeah, they get closer. Well, you probably, Joe probably read, we actually have a right-of-way across this land. You may have read that, from early 1960, Ridley Wright, if you ever heard that name. He owned all that up through there to mention at one time.
Oh, wow.
For us to use when our driveway is in Rock Road's footing. A deed around 19, early 60s.
I think you shared that with me at one point. I said, I think you had shared that with me at one point.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that, I would suppose that the driveway from York Road into the development out to 70 would, would, would cover that right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
Yes, at one point, you ever knew the Reading family that lived there at one time, Reading torture namesake? They actually took my mother-in-law out to school one day in a canoe. I went to see it, my wife. So they, she went out, oh, of course, Reading's there, out, and the other part of this, and went to school. You might, might not have had her in class, I don't know, but a lot of folks, I'm sure Larry remembers her.
Yes, sir.
Miss, she was a beloved second-rate teacher for many years.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Eskey.
All right.
Yes, sir.
That's our, that's our concerns.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments at this time? With that being said, we'll close our citizen comments, and at which time, I'm looking for a motion in regards to this item on our agenda. I will make a motion for approval. Try to summarize what I have in here. Common, I guess I'm gonna just call it common signage for all five lots. Within the, or community signage, I forget, Ms. Johnson, well, how you define that, but community signage to be located along Lebanon Road that would service all five proposed lots, including the lot in question, Lot 5. The potential to look at a, some type of a raised median at the entry point of this, to kind of break up your traffic, show connectivity. On this plat, to remove the radius turn to the eastern portion of the, of this plat, and show connectivity to the, I'm gonna call it MAP 054, parcel 2200. And show connectivity to the, I'm going to call it map zero five four parcel two two zero zero by Mr. Patel, which is the. Southeast corner against Lebanon Road and show its connectivity and connectivity points. Supporting staff's decision on the additional crosswalks within. Not supporting the outside storage as proposed here. Not supporting the waiver for the buffer. Supporting the waiver for the variance for the design guidelines. Note to include that all construction traffic will enter and exit via the Lebanon Road cut. Erosion control items to not be located within the buffer, and the buffer therefore being maintained. And supporting all other staff comments, Public Works and planning alike.
Just for a quick clarification on the outside storage, are you referencing the portable storage trailers such as the?
You bet.
The eighteen-wheelers, because they do have the outdoor garden center and everything, so we just want to make sure on that.
If they want to bring it back and show that, or bring it back to you all. Since this is not a PUD and show that they're going to use the same exterior materials and guidelines as set forward and properly screen it. I think it's worthy of discussion and a look, but if it's just going to be eighteen-wheeler trailers laying there, not a fan.
Agreed.
That would be my motion. Please, Shane?
I would just ask for a recommendation regarding the construction.
Since the plan's shown, they do, they do use Lebanon Road to. To state that no construction is allowed, no construction traffic is allowed off of York Road.
Okay, I will amend that comment to support Shane's comment there to say no construction traffic is allowed off of York Road. Additional lighting at the entrance?
Entrance and then spill over lighting from the dress keys.
Yes. So that would be no wall packs on the back, additional lighting to make sure that the entrance at Lebanon Road is properly lit. Amendment or addition to the motion, is acceptable your second statement? That's a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye? Against? Abstentions? So approved. Alright, our next item up on our agenda falls underneath the PUD amendment, it is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. It is to review the PUD amendment for Tomlinson Point located at twenty-eight forty-four. Kirk Road. John?
As you stated, this is a PUD amendment to Tomlinson Point. What they're doing here is they're going to add an additional phase, it's seven. Basically, the. Summary of it is eighty-eight, eighty-eight point acres, the PUD was initially, this addition here will kick it up to one sixteen point six-three acres. Overall lot count goes up two lots, that's it. So you have a total of two hundred and eight, or two hundred and twenty versus two hundred and eighteen in the original approval. The requests that came in, they asked for RS fifteen PUD, you know, RS fifteen base zoning. Since the rest of the subdivision is RS fifteen as well. Their overall density doesn't require that, so. I've made the change here in the staff report to say RS twenty. Additionally, if they go with RS fifteen, they got to do a land use amendment because RS fifteen has been moved to high-density land use classification. So RS twenty captures their density, doesn't exceed that. Overall density is one point eight eight. The PUD, the PUD before this amendment, it was two point four or five units an acre. So it's gone down, density's gone down. Two additional lots. Additional open space. The new, the newer, the new phase, the lots are larger, kicking the average square foot of the lots up substantially for the whole PUD. I guess that's the gist of it, but it's. RS twenty, not the RS fifteen is what you would have to recommend, is what staff is recommending here. And with that, staff recommends forwarding a positive recommendation for the amendment to the Board of Commissioners. With the conditions provided. Probably the biggest one, like I said, the RS twenty rather than the RS fifteen, because it's unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane, public works?
So the big sticking point that Public Works has been working with the development team on. Is street-facing garages from an access street. We've come to a bit of a compromise where, as shown, there will be six. Street-facing garages on what, it's labeled a modified access lane, but for all intents and purposes, it is an access street through that section. That is because of where that phase of the development is at the moment. And there was really no opportunity to reduce that lot count to get the bigger side-facing garages. That said, they were willing to work with everything being proposed and came down to. Get the side-facing garages on all additional units being proposed in this additional phase. Which is why you see that, that. Different unit count. South of the existing phase. And staff supports this, this compromise.
John, please.
I'd like to add, sorry to interrupt, I thought maybe you were done.
You're good.
Are you done?
Yeah.
It sounded like it. I just wanted to mention that they're not asking for any additional waivers, like the waivers approved with the original PUD. Are, will carry over to this phase, excepting one thing. They're asking for a, staff supports this, it's a six-foot, or rather, sorry, six-inch. Six-inch finished floor elevation in lieu of the eighteen inches required by the code. That's the only waiver with this amendment that they're asking. So any of the waivers that were approved in the original PUD carryover, and that includes things like facade materials and all that, that will all stay the same.
Perfect. Questions, comments from the commission? Commissioner George?
I've, I've got some comments I'm going to start with, and then I'm going to end with questions. This project is troubling for me, for a couple reasons. This is the third amendment to the PUD. And I had some time this week, I looked back at some planning commission meetings from twenty twenty-one. B O C meetings from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one. And this started out as a, as a project that was higher density than the B O C was comfortable with. However, there was going to be a trailhead with facilities and bathrooms and parking, and it was going to be. Something that could anchor the north end of our city to have some types of trails and greenways like other parts of the city are able to have. And through PUD amendments, the city purchased land to be able to make these trails at the higher-density cost. Then a PUD amendment comes and they says, oh, we'll, we'll pay for the bathrooms and the parking lots if you give us a little more land, so. The city went along with that, and now we were sitting here in twenty-two, I guess twenty-three. With land that was flood-prone that wasn't any use to us. So. Really just kind of scratching my head here how we started with a higher-density project that was going to have amenities, not only for the subdivision, but for the community. And through three different PUD amendments now, we've bled it down to just a super-high-density subdivision with no amenities. I mean, we've got to be a little more intentional, folks, it's our job as a planning commission, it's the B O C's job. To be intentional with these projects, and if you look over a three-year period of bleeding down amenities, what it boils down to. Is a simple thing that if you twist the right arms and make the right comments, you can. Start with a high-density project that has a back promise of amenities, and then by the end of it, you've just got high-density, so. I, I think that's my comments on it, I'm pretty, I'm pretty disgusted. Quite frankly, that the city has got a piece of property now that is rendered useless to us, and we can't do anything for the citizens, so now we've got. No choice but to sell it back to that very development so they can build more houses. So I think the only question I have for staff, and none of this is geared towards staff, I want to front-load that. I think a lot of this frustration just has to do with development and, and the process of how we've done things the past couple of years, but. At what point during the last PUD amendment, when additional lots were given to the development and they had promised to build bathrooms? At what point did the city determine that we couldn't use that property? Was it at the submittals, was it a tech review, was it a planning commission, was it at the B O C's first, second, third reading? I just don't get how we, we agreed to this, we had the property, it was a great idea, and then a year later. It's not a good idea anymore, and it's not usable. But I think that's really kind of my question is, why was it usable? And then we turned out to buy a piece of property that we can't use and do anything for our citizens.
John and I, neither one were involved in some of the discussions as to how the land sale was done. So we would be remiss to try to speak or explain what happened or what transpired. We can try and see if we can get you some answers to those questions, I know that won't assist tonight. But I will be happy to delve a little deeper into it to find out the situations that took place, because again. We weren't involved in those discussions, so I'm not, I'm not really sure at this point, but I will be happy to try and find out that information for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and like I said, it's nothing towards y'all, y'all do a great job. But this isn't effective governing, this isn't what we should be doing for our citizens. You've got citizens that live around this that were promised a trailhead and facilities and bathrooms, and that could have been their buying to say, you know, the project's not so bad, we'll get a trail out of it. And now we're sitting here and they're, they're not going to get any of those amenities promised, so I think we just need to be a little more intentional in the future. Of how we, how we do development, and if we have things along the way like trailheads and facilities that are promised. That we not only hold developers accountable, but we hold ourselves accountable. To be able to follow through with these projects and the promises, not only for the people that are going to live here. But for the people that have got to welcome this development in their backyards. Last thing I've got is I've got an amendment I'd like to make. And that is that if the property, if the sale between the city and this development doesn't close in two years. I'd like the PUD amendment to revert back, I just don't want the city's property, if anything falls through, to get tied into with this PUD. So that'd be the only amendment I've got, and I think that concludes my comments.
Very acceptable? I guess more importantly, is that enforceable?
Can you repeat what you wanted to revert back?
So just a two-year clause that within two years, if the city has not. Come to terms with an acceptable agreement and a sale has not gone through on the property, that this PUD amendment will revert. Essentially, just don't want to get the city's property tied up with this PUD amendment for the foreseeable future.
I do hear what you're saying, I'd have to. I'm not sure about the answer to that right now. I'd have to check on that, I'm not sure.
Okay, while we're. Thinking through that right there, let's go, I'm going to go ahead and, Commissioner George, please, the floor's still yours, but let's call for representation of this project to come onto the microphone. Just a moment, we'll get name and address for the record.
We make a motion, you could take care of it there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Further questions, comments in the commission? Alright. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Mike Burton, I work for Toll Brothers, the applicant, and I live at two four four eight West Clay Drive, Wilson County.
Could you possibly help Commissioner George with any of those answers?
Yes.
Wonderful.
So, the initial assemblage of the property was from three owners. Two landowners who lived on the farms, and then the city. The city owned sixty acres, and the initial PUD in which Beazer Homes assembled the properties and processed the initial PUD for. Two hundred and eighteen units, which included at that time the city park. So thirty acres of the city land was designated for residential. Thirty acres was designated for a passive park that was going to include a bathhouse facility and a parking lot. No other improvements were to be provided by the applicant or the developer. Toll Brothers bought the property from Beazer. We have processed three amendments. First amendment was a modification to architectural standards. Second amendment was a redesign of phases two through six. Which reduced the unit count from, at that time, two hundred and ten units to a hundred and ninety-two units. The city came to us and asked if we were interested in purchasing the additional thirty acres of land where the park site was. Initially, and included in the first, second, and third PUD. We evaluated the property, and we have put together a plan, there's a contract, there is a purchase with an outside closing date. That we intend to move forward with.
So how did we get from a trailhead with facilities to not?
So there was no trailhead, so there was a bath facility, I mean, there was a trailhead from our.
Staff has got the word trailhead, is that not factual, or? I went back and listened to the meetings and trailhead was the terminology used then, so.
So there were no trails proposed on the thirty-acre retained parkland. There was trails within the Tomlinson Point community that would connect to the city park. And the city at that time would presumably advance any improvements or trails within their thirty acres. So Tomlinson Point does have a trail within it that connects to that parkland. With this application, we are extending that trail within the community so that residents can. You know, meander around the community much more easily.
Yeah, and I guess that's just where we dropped the ball on our side of things, picking the wrong thirty acres. Because I think that's what it kind of boils down to, is the thirty acres that we retained was not usable for the original purpose that it was sold back in twenty twenty-one.
Sure, and let me correct one other thing, you said it was flood-prone property, it's not very high-ground property, there are a few environmental features on it, meaning small streams, but it's not unusable property.
So, so the word, and once again, I'm, I'm just going off the videos I watched, I, the phrase floodplone, well, flood-prone was used. So you're saying those words that were used by Board of Commissioners in twenty twenty-two and three were not correct?
I don't believe that that's correct, there's, I don't believe that there's any flood plain or.
I didn't say floodplain, I said flood-pro, there's a difference.
There are environmental features on it, it's very small streams, that would be ephemeral or intermittent, intermittent at best. That do convey water when there are storms.
So if it does rain, it could flood?
Just like every other stream or ditch.
Okay, well, I appreciate, I think we're splitting hairs here.
Yes.
But, yeah, just, it just shocks me how we've got this project that. We start out with some promise and we get to here, and here we are. Kind of with our, our hands tied up, it's unfortunate that we've got inflation, it's unfortunate that land property is so expensive now, because if. This was two thousand eight or nine, we'd be sitting here trying to give you the land back, because we couldn't use it, so. Just a lot of frustration on my end, I'm going to support this, we kind of have to, there's, there's nothing the city can do to develop this and make it good for its citizens, but.
Could be deferred to get a proper answer.
Yeah, if you'd be willing to defer it.
I don't believe that this would warrant a deferral.
So with the approval of this is the condition of whether or not you buy the property back from the city?
So we never purchased this part of the property from the city from, to begin with.
That's what the PUD amendment is, right? This, this land right here is what you're buying from the city.
Correct.
That was the chairman's question.
I, I understood the question to mean that we were buying the property back from the city. We, we never bought this property from the city to begin with. That, that's all I'm saying. They, they retained this land from the original transaction.
So it was never conveyed, never sold?
Yeah.
But when we first, I guess that's where Commissioner George is, when we first saw it, it, it had the park. And everything Commissioner George has referred to. And so now. Because property never exchanged. And so now, because property never exchanged hands, going back to what you guys originally wanted is basically what you're trying to get back to.
I, I don't know that this from in the original PUD, whether or not that this property was proposed to be residential. And through the process to get the original PUD amendment approved, the 30 acres was retained. We don't have anybody here from Beazer or their team who processed that original PUD. So I don't know if that was the case. I only know what, what the original PUD that was approved is. You know, I, I would add this, you know, this, the, the city has decided to divest from this property. They came to us. We're putting together the best plan for the site that is in keeping with everything else that we've done on this site to improve it from the original PUD. I understand that losing 30 acres of potential future parkland isn't great all the way around. However, where this was I located at this point in time, you know, maybe 20 years down the road, it's a little different, but this park area would have been very secluded and away from many of your citizens and would have really felt more like just a park specifically for the community, which was, in our opinion, always not that great, but.
Is it the face seven? I guess I'm, and this may be back for staff. What's it look like now versus what they've got proposed right here?
Those two cul-de-sacs that kind of come down.
That's the phase seven, right?
Yes, that's the phase seven. That's what's added. Yes.
That's correct. It was a cul-de-sac.
Did we, and this is random enough of this, when they submit to, to staff, they require electronic plans submitted via PDFs, right? If we request that, could we, because this one right here, I find their plans hard to read and I read plans daily. If we request, can we get you guys to, can you guys email us in electronic copy so we're able to really see these plans?
Sure.
If it ever comes across and this plan's just more difficult to read than a lot of them.
We do get digital.
We can send those to you. We just recently approved prior to this PUD, the phases three through six.
Yep.
As it, it's current PUD form. So I can send those to you, Luke.
I just got one question. Commissioner George?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
I don't think you're going to get the answer that you're seeking at this moment.
Not at all.
Um, explain to me what you're looking for within the variance to allow six inch exposed foundation in lieu of the required 18. What are you, what are you doing?
So the current design standards of the city's requires 18 inches of exposed foundation at finished grade at the front of the house to the first floor of the home. So at every house, you would have three steps going into your house, either from the garage, if it's front, front facing, and if it's, and from the lead walk as well. There's customers of ours that are saying that that's problematic for them. They're elder. They don't want to walk up steps. They want a home that's has first floor, primary bedrooms, easy accessibility. And then there, there are instances around the city where there are other, excuse me, my mouth is getting very dry, where other subdivisions have been developed where they have obtained waivers for this particular item.
It's brick. Is it necessary?
Well, it's not the brick. It's, it would still be brick and it would still have a water table at a minimum based on our previously approved design waivers. It's just limiting the steps into the home. So it's, it's reducing the height, the total height of the foundation.
Further questions, comments from the commission? Wonderful. Thank you. This time let's take citizen comments regarding this item on our agenda. Any citizens wish to make comment are welcome and encouraged to do so. Come to the microphone, name and address for the record.
Hello, Becky Rusick, 505 Parish Way. I just wanted to make a couple of comments with all the amendments that they've asked for, for this. We, our property is directly behind the building. We have endured property damage, unsafe working conditions, and a lot of other things from this development. So I would just ask that you guys quit allowing for the amendments that they're asking for. He's talking about the steps that people are asking for. All these houses are two-story anyway, so I don't understand that. But I have made several phone calls. I've not gotten any response from them until I got Kenny Martin involved and changes were made for about a week and then gone right back to what they did. So just asking that you guys take into consideration the residents that live directly behind what they're building.
Is that by blasting?
Pardon?
Can you share a little bit more? Is that, you said you had some damage. Is that due to blasting?
From the blasting, yeah. Yeah. So.
Wonderful. Anything else?
No.
People are not getting over on your guys' property or anything like that?
Well, they, they have blasted right up against our property and we have decking and pool that is about 10 feet from where they're blasting. So we've had damage to the decking and the pool. Our neighbors had damage as well. Another neighbor had a tree come down in their property that they did not remove. So we had to remove it for our neighbor. So it's just been building up.
If that occurs, isn't there, there's an insurance or something that's for that? If it can be documented that it was occurred due to that, is it not correct?
State Fire Marshal's Office, if you'll get with me, I'll get you the contact information for our fire marshal and let him get you in touch with the state fire marshal's office because they do have a division for the blasting issues and complaints and insurance claims on that.
We have been through that and I'll let my husband speak on that.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Hefner, that's not here tonight, has really been an advocate for controlling the blasting even more. Please name and address for the.
Sure. My name is Boris Rusik. I live on 505 Parish Way. When it comes down to the blasting, which I addressed that to the commissioners as well the fire, as including the Tennessee, state of Tennessee advising them, hey, I know when something is close versus something is far, their excuse, starting from the blasting company all the way to the fire marshal that they say, well, their result says totally different. This is the box of the semis, semis box. This is my pool. This is my fence. This is where the blasting. So the reading from the blasting to the box is completely different than from the blasting to the pool, which I'm trying to address that to them. I'm trying to advise about them. I'm trying to go ahead and also say, hey, I have a lot of rocks that I cannot move from this blasting, by the way, which I addressed multiple times. Their workers were simply straightforward. We can't touch that because it's on your property. I did not put there half a ton of rock. You guys left the rock here. I can't move that. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that the way that the, my backyard goes, and this is the old land, they cut that land down at least four or five, if not even more feet. Now my backyard, sooner or later, it's going to start to get erosion of the rains and everything, which I tried to address that with the, again, same crew. Are you guys going to go ahead and build any kind of support wall or where we standing here? That's on your property. We don't have any problems. So you building your stuff, not worry about my stuff, me to worry about my own things. I don't think so in this case scenario that is not appropriate. The last things that I've done is actually address and ask, is there any possible way that you guys can at least build a support wall? I mean, they just turn away and walk away. So moving forward, building this community, this, this development, I'm very happy about. There's no questions asked. There's going to be a lot of happy family lives there. But I have a question. I've been living in these areas for the last 20 years. In that 20 years, there was a lot of accidents in that curd road, that little curve. In fact, there was even a couple of the casualties that they happened on that road. By the time the Tomlinson basically subdivision started building, they expanded the road on the front of their entrance, but nobody else take care about any other side of the road regarding the curd road, moving towards the Lebanon road. You will sit in the traffic for at least 30 minutes to get out, especially talking about school hours or even in the morning hours as well, when you're coming home, if you get into the school traffic. So the question that I have for the city and whoever approved this, did anybody take in consideration, how is that going to apply to the accidents and the basically emergency vehicle moving to the traffic? I mean, that's just a question. Let's think about it. It's logic. You're going to have a kid of the high school. He's not going to move. He's not, he's going to be scared behind the wall, behind the steering wheel to move in the traffic. He's not going to know what to do. But then again, that's just a proposition. That's just advice to everybody because delaying the emergency vehicles in this case scenario on top of all that is going on all of us. We done it. They did it. We done it. We, we approved them to do that. So that's all what I got. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Please do, take an opportunity to reach out to Ms. Johnson and definitely see if she can be a further assistance to you guys and see where, where that goes and, and certainly our city manager, Kenny Martin. Any additional citizen comments this time?
I'm Joel Burns. I live at 2980 Curd Road. I would just like to thank Commissioner George for the statement about accountability and my fellow neighbors that just spoke. Just this week, my next door neighbor, who lives practically right next door to this development, came home from working out at the gym and there was a hole dug in front of his driveway and he had to use my driveway because he couldn't get into his own. Because apparently gas lines that have been dug out in front of our houses that we agreed to, running into this development were laid wrong, or they used the wrong size pipe, or whatever they told my neighbor, they just showed up, dug the hole again and started working. And Commissioner George, speaking about accountability, for the sake of my, my home and my immediate neighbors, we don't get notified when these crews show up and start working right in front of our, right in front of our homes. We wake up and just, just today, I, I worked from home. I was at home and I look out my window at one o'clock in the afternoon and I have no access from my driveway to my road because the front of my driveway is gone. Now, within, within another couple of hours, they have repaved and, and gotten me a temporary access. But if I had had to leave my house at that, at that moment to do something, I would not have been able to do it. And all I'm asking on behalf of myself and my neighbors is notification. If you're going to, if you're going to dig up my driveway so I can't get out, just tell me the day before or even that morning. Give, give me time to get my vehicle out so that if I need to leave, when you guys need to do your jobs, it's not a problem. So at the beginning of the project, I felt like we were informed a lot. They were very clear about what's, what was going on. But now I don't know, week to week, day to day, are they, are, am I going to have a road crew in front of my house digging stuff up? Is there going to be blasting? It's just some days we don't see anybody and then other days we don't have driveways. So I appreciate your words, Commissioner, just about for the citizens that live here and have this going on right next door, just communicate with us, notify us what's going on. That's, that's all I have to say. But thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments this time? See no citizen comments? Like to ask for a motion regarding this item on our agenda. Keep in mind, this is also a recommendation item that's ultimately decided by the board of commissioners.
Make a motion for positive recommendation with the condition stated plus the reversion policy if legal and within ordinances. Will that suffice? Adding to the motion that should it be legal and should it comply with ordinances that the property reverts back to the city, if not purchased within two years? That makes sense? That satisfy yours?
Yeah. Okay. Some motion? I'll second that motion. It gives us a motion and a second for a positive recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Against abstentions, that is a positive recommendation. All right. Next item up on our agenda, pause underneath annexation plan of services and rezone. Do want to make a note as we maneuver over to this section, just a kind of a land use plan amendment disclaimer. And this is for land use plan amendments. Positive vote is a recommendation item to the board of commissioners, whereas a negative vote does not move forward unless the city commissioner sponsors it for a vote at a board of commissioners meeting. I know that other one that we just heard was also a recommendation item, but just a little change in what we do. So next item up will be item 10A, which is a recommendation item back to the board of commissioners. It is to review the annexation, including a plan of services for 448 Bass Lane. John?
Thank you. As I said, request for annexation 448 Bass Lane. This is in the county. Currently, it is proposed to be a 21 lot, single family residential subdivision. This is in between Bass Lane, I believe Holly Hills is the connection point. It's about 26 acres. The proposed lots are 40,000 square feet or larger. They're asking annexation. The caveat here is that this area is not served by sewer. So staff is recommending negative recommendation to the board of commissioners for the annexation of 448 Bass Lane due to the fact that it's not served by sewer. I will add that it is, we have a standalone ordinance that requires specific things of subdivisions in the county. And this does comply with it. Like I said, the lots are 40,000 square foot or larger. They can develop in the county without the sewer if it's denied by us. And I believe it has been or is in the process of doing so. So negative recommendation. Thank you.
Very well. Shane, anything from public works?
To piggyback off of what John was saying, we had, they, this developer did request sewer availability and we did provide a letter to the developer stating that it was not in the best interest of the city to serve this development with sewer due to the fact there was no infrastructure close by to serve.
Well, thank you. Questions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, we'll representation, name and address for the record.
Good evening. Charlie Dean, Dean Design Group, 1633 West Main Street in Lebanon. I'm here representing Mr. Jacobson. We do have this property. It's on R1 in the county. As John mentioned, this will comply with, it is in your urban growth boundary. That's the reason that we're here. We'd like to move forward with development of this subdivision in the county under the county's regulations. Since it's in your urban growth boundary, we have to come and request annexation. We will accept your negative recommendation.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Questions, comments from the commission? Kind of thought that's what you were going to be asking for as well. That being said, let's open it up to citizen comments. Any citizens wishing to make comment, welcome, encouraged to do so. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments this time? Please. Come on up, name and address for the record.
Kenny White, 343 Bass Lane.
Yes, sir.
I think we've got about 15 or 16 residents of Bass Lane here tonight. I just wanted to make sure before we moved on that we understood the negative recommendation means the annexation is not happening at this time.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for having to hear from another 15 years.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, you've heard him say that he wants a negative. You've heard staff say it's a negative and so, yeah, why fight that?
Thank you so much.
But keep in mind, well, I guess that this could technically be sponsored by Board of Commissioner and brought to, I don't think it would, but there's, yeah, there's a little technicality in there, but kind of doubtful.
Okay, I certainly appreciate it.
Just to give you all the information.
Little piece of mind, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That being said, I'm looking for a recommendation. Well, hold on one second, please, before we table that. At this time, I need to close our planning commission meeting in order to open a public hearing. Public hearing is in regards to item 10A, which we're currently hearing. It's a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners to review the annexation, including plan of services for 448 Bass Lane. Anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing is welcome and encouraged to do so. Come to the microphone, name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, we'll close our public hearing, reopen our planning commission meeting and at which time I'm looking for a recommendation in regards to this item on our agenda.
I'll make the negative recommendation.
There's a negative recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Cersei on that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions, that is a negative recommendation. Next item up on our agenda is item 10B. It is also a recommendation item. Give me just a second before we get that one. Yeah, I was a little surprised when we saw that one. Bass Lane, if you've never been down it, it's a very unique road to see something on, so. All right, let's try it one more time. Next item up on our agenda is item 10B. It's to review the annexation, including a plan of services for 4009 Beckwith Road. Ms. Johnson?
This was submitted by Mr. Wilson. They currently have approximately five acres. It's one parcel on the east side of Beckwith Road. It's just north of Golden Bear Gateway. It is currently in the county and is Wilson County R1 zoning, which is low-density residential. They have requested annexation and rezone. They have no immediate plans for this property, but due to the location and proximity to the upcoming Golden Bear Place, they have a desire to get this property rezoned and annexed into the city. The zoning does match surrounding parcels and there is no land use required because it does currently have the interchange commercial, interstate commercial, excuse me, land use classification, so there is no land use needed. Should the property be rezoned? The property is subject to the permitted uses and regulations that are required by the intended zoning. Staff does recommend approval of the annexation, or positive recommendation of the annexation and rezone.
Shane, anything from Public Works?
No comment.
Very well. Questions, comments from the commission? Seeing none, we'll call for citizen comments in regards to this item on our agenda. Anyone wishing to make comments, welcome and encouraged to do so. Microphone, name and address. See no citizen comments at this time. Need to close our planning commission meeting in order to open a public hearing. Public hearing is regards to item 10B, which is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners to review the annexation, including plan of services for 4009 Beckwith Road. Anyone wishing to make comment during the public hearing, welcome, encouraged to do so. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, we'll close our public hearing, reopen our planning commission meeting and at which time I'm looking for a recommendation in regards to this item on our agenda. It's a positive recommendation? Second, let you guys paper, rock, scissors, that one. That's a motion and a second for a positive recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions, that is a positive recommendation. Next item up on our agenda falls underneath item 10C. Review the rezone from Wilson County R1 Interstate Commercial for the property located at 4009 Beckwith Road. John?
Thank you. All right. Notice, this is the Godfrey subdivision off of Nonoville Road.
Not yet.
Oh, sorry.
It will be next.
I just realized that was the annexation and the rezone. So we just need to vote on the rezone on that same thing. I'll just pass the annexation through. We didn't do them together, so.
Yeah. Comments, hold the sign. Shane, I'm going to give you one more chance. Anything from Public Works?
No.
All right. Any questions, comments from the commission? Seeing none, this time we'll call for citizen comments. Anyone wishing to make comment, welcome and encouraged to do so. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, I am looking for a recommendation in regards to this item on our agenda. It's a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions, that is a positive recommendation. All right, next item up on our agenda falls underneath Land Use Plan Amendment, Preliminary Master Development Plan. We'll begin with item 11A, which is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners to review the land use plan amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential for the Godfrey subdivision located at 1030 Nonoville Road. Let me, we're good. Very well. All right. John?
Now's the time. All right, 11 lots residential subdivision on the east side of Nonoville Road, cul-de-sac. It's, if you know where Holy Temple Church is, it's behind that, southeast of that. The goal here was to go with low density. It is, they're asking for RS20 PUD, medium-density land use amendment, but with the intent that the overall density is 1.1 units an acre, since the land use map up there calls for low-density residential. The RS20, the PUD, you know, to get the waivers we'll get to later to amend lot size or lot width and things like that. That's the intent here, but I'm sure you've looked at the plans and the biggest issue I see with it at this moment is if you look at the lot behind the church, east of the church, there's a note in there that says it's to be conveyed to the church. I believe that's for their parking. So if you remove this lot from the PUD, the density goes from 1.09 to 1.5 units an acre, which is a medium-density zoning or medium-density classification, I guess. If there's no intention of that lot being a buildable lot, it needs to be removed from the PUD and this density recalculated to get the low-density target that the land use calls for. So that's the biggest issue with this that I see. It's a little misleading, the way it's drawn here, to include that only to deed it back over to the church. It's not a buildable lot, it's going to be parking, I believe. That being said, there's a few waivers associated with this as well. 50/50 full masonry, 50% of any combination of masonry and fiber cement, staff supports. Omit masonry column between garage doors. We tend to support that. Encroaching the minimum edge requirements for church driveway, I'll defer to Public Works when it's their turn. Setbacks 30, 10, 20, in lieu of 30, 20, 20, we support that. Minimum lot width of 75 in lieu of 100 supports that. Maximum lot coverage 35 in lieu of 25 staff supports. The other two waivers I'll let Public Works weigh in on. So essentially, we'd recommend approval if this was amended to include only the buildable lots in the subdivision, you know, to calculate that density. Because as it sits now, if that, once that lot goes to the church, you have a subdivision that's 1.5 units an acre rather than the 1.09. And 1.5 exceeds the low-density threshold, so. Possibly, staff would support this if that was changed. That lot was removed and it was still a subdivision at or below the threshold for low-density residential. But as it sits now, it appears that way, but it includes that non-buildable lot that's going to eventually go to the church anyway. So I'm arguing that it shouldn't have been included in the PUD in the first place. That's the biggest points on this. If you have any questions, feel free.
Are we discussing the land use amendment at this point right now or both? The PUD and the land use? We don't have any comments on the land use. If you want to answer questions on the PUD, we can as well.
Please, Commissioner George?
Just wait when he gets up here.
Come on up, name and address for the record.
My question is.
We're waiting on you back there.
Good evening, Joe Addicks, CSDG.
Would you be willing to defer this a month so we can get correct PUD plans and calculations? I just think that would make a lot of us more comfortable.
Yeah, and I think if you bear with me and give me a couple of minutes, I think we could talk through it tonight, maybe save everybody a month to think about. So John's absolutely correct that we're requesting the medium-density land use, which would allow up to 2.2 units an acre, right? So we could technically get a lot more on this parcel than what the 11 lots were saying. So the predicament we are in is we have to do a land swap with the church to gain access. Where we're bringing our driveway out to Nonoville or the public road connection, everybody's probably driven that stretch in Nonoville and knows the site distance. Site distance works at that location, right? Can't come out on the other side of the church because you're on the back hill side of the hill. Now, that being said, we looked at this a couple of ways before we submitted. We could have submitted using the cluster of the variable law provision, non-PUD route, okay? We decided, we have enough acreage. When you factor in the piece of the church, it puts us over the 10-acre threshold that's required for an RS20 PUD, okay? So we were able to submit it as a PUD using that provision. If we subtract out that piece of the property that is going to be swapped with the church, it takes us under the 10-acre minimum that's needed for RS20 PUD per the code. So we were in a quandary, right? We can submit a straight zone piece, same number of lots. To be perfectly honest, maybe it's our own fault, we just know too much and we're in front of you every month, right? We know that everybody likes to see the PUD come through, especially for residential, even though it's only 11 lots. So we're open to suggestions and talking it through. We felt, yes, while the density does appear, right? When you take the church swap land out, takes you to 1.5 units per acre, which now means we got to request the medium-density land use, even though we are still not exceeding what the current land use or zoning would allow on the parcel.
Yeah, we're giving you, I mean, we're giving you low density anyway. I mean, can we not just make that land swap a condition of the approval? Is that, let me ask you, our city attorney, that's enforceable by us if we make that land swap a condition of this approval, which therefore it diverts back down and gets everything that staff desires, get the applicant desires and probably what this commission desires?
Yes.
So we could just make that land swap a condition of approval? We're giving them a low density, we're not giving them a medium density and everybody doesn't have to worry about it for a month?
Yeah.
That'd be acceptable? Yeah. Yeah, I'm very familiar with the church and lots of, I used to work with them in my past life over there and lots of good people. Are you guys going to make any improvements that you know of back there on the property behind them or anything happening with that? It's not their current parking right now, though, is it?
Correct, correct. It's just too.
So they would have an opportunity to maybe do some more within the church itself?
That's correct.
Wonderful. Good people there. Questions, comments from the commission?
Yes.
Please.
Talking about this property multiple times every day because we live in that area. And you talked about the site distance, that was my biggest concern. And I understand you're going to be, at least when you're approaching it from the south, turning right into the property is not that big of a deal. And I understand it's only 11 homes. When you're coming back from the other direction, somebody stopped, turned, make that left-hand turn, someone's going to top that hill. They're going to see the car stopped there. That's my concern because you have tons of cars, especially in the spring, summer time, hauling campers, hauling boats, and they haul butt down Nonoville Road. And so that would be my concern. And you're coming out of where Wintry is being built and they have, you know, turning lane, right, and turning lane into that property and they don't have a site issue there. And so I just, not that it's going to change anything, but it really, this concerns me because I go every day and even if you come down through there and there's buses stopped just before this property to let kids out, I just see that there's going to be some accidents there.
I agree with you 100%. That was going to be my comment, that was going to come to if we get to the preliminary master development plan next on the agenda. I've got maybe something that will help soften, we'll see.
Right, well, even to the extent that the church there has the conditional yellow, the caution lights that are flashing during their service times.
They turn them on and off through their church building.
Yeah.
Yep. And kind of where we put this condition on the neighborhood, going across my, the street from my current neighborhood and because of a blind curved hill, which creates a similar situation from a visibility standpoint and that exact concern. And we put a condition on them, the required flashing light signage, dangerous intersection. I'm not sure of the terminology going on it, but in lieu of that intersection I had and it's a 24-hour day flashing sign right there that's not as intrusive because I'd even thought about saying, hey, put the controls to that flasher at the church under their control. But I imagine there's lots of neighbors surrounding this parcel that probably wouldn't enjoy that bright yellow flashing light outside their bedroom window. So, but those are softer, more subtle lights on those signage and it's kind of where I was going as well, preliminary master development plan. I agree with you. Questions, comments? Well said. Thank you. Let's call for citizen comments in regards to this item on our agenda. Anyone wishing to make comments, welcome and encouraged to do so. Come to the microphone and name and address for the record.
Demar and Bragg, 800 Lomond Road. I'm the pastor of the church. And Mr., we have been in good conversation with them and I support. Our board has met and we support the movement, moving forward in this project with the amendment. We agree with you. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
I'm Anita Carver and I live at 1061 Nonoville Road and I live exactly across the street from the church. And I have been there almost 50 years. And the young lady there, she is absolutely right. You're asking, if you build that and the way it's going to do, you're asking for some very bad accidents to happen because it's all I can do to get out of my driveway. And I just, you know, I just think it's a very bad idea because it's a blind hill. Even I have to stop and wait a second before I can even make a left-hand turn because of the blind hill. And in the afternoons, I have heard tires squeal to make a complete stop from having a wreck because of the buses that turn there at Cedar Creek for the kids to get off the school bus. And I'm, my husband and I are very, I mean, I mean... And I'm, my husband and I are very, I mean, I've got other neighbors that couldn't make it, they're out of town, but we're very opposed to this because you're asking for a very bad accident to happen and possibly referring death. That's all I can tell you. It's very bad right through there because they come flying down that hill and once they top that hill and a car coming out, I've even had seen them have to direct traffic at the church and order people standing out in the middle of Nonville Road for those people from the church to get out. And then, I mean, this is a very bad idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. See no additional citizen comments at this time? Like to ask for recommendation regards this item on our agenda.
I'll make a motion for a negative recommendation.
It's a motion for a negative recommendation?
I'll second it.
It's a motion and a second for a negative recommendation? All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand against abstentions? So that would technically not be a negative recommendation. So we would have to keep the item on the table then. Would that be, since the second only got two votes and not a majority, that means would be indicative of a positive recommendation? I am correct? There would be a comment, I'd like to lie within that if that is what happens is that makes that, because if you voted negative.
That motion just dies, doesn't it?
That's my question, does the motion die?
We would still be, we would go back to the main motion. Somebody would still have to make the positive motion.
There you go.
Yeah.
With that being said, looking for a motion? May we amend that motion to also include the lot swap to the church? And that gets it as a low-density recommendation? Okay. Mr. Armstead, you still standing second? Yes, ma'am. Would be the, you bet. Yes, ma'am. And how about we maybe include in that motion that is subject to the approval of the preliminary master development plan? It's a motion and a second for a positive recommendation? All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions? That is a positive recommendation. Next item up on the agenda is also a recommendation item back to the board of commissioners. Review the preliminary master development plan, PUD with a rezone from RS40 to RS30 PUD for the Godfrey subdivision located at 1030 Nonville Road. John?
I think I spoke what I had to say on this one, so.
Very well. Shane?
The variance that he talks about, we support variance number three. We support variance number five and a cut condition only. Now let Todd talk about variance number two.
Yeah, the variances are different numbers on the site plan, the packet here, but essentially variance number two is a variance to encroach on your 15-foot required edge clearance. Essentially, that's just the measurement of the edge of your property to the edge of your driveway. The reason for this variance is what we've talked about, what the concerns that have been brought up about site distance. This lot is parched pretty precariously at the top of a hill. Having been out in the field, the location they're proposing, their main drive is literally the only location on the lot. If you move it even a little bit, you lose site distance. Having done field observations, you do have adequate site distance. Certainly not surplus. And there are some things that could be done, such as relocating that overhead beacon to the intersection itself. However, that is not our utility, so we don't have much say in that.
That's site distance based on what speed?
That site distance, the profile, I believe, is based on 45 miles per hour. It's not in the packet. Let me pull it up.
While you're doing that, what's the posted out there right now? 35?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, Todd has looked at that. Any additional questions, comments from the commission? Mike, one real quick because I want to make sure we include as a condition is street signs to be put both northbound and southbound on, within the right-of-way, flashing signs indicative of the upcoming intersection. There's a note on the plan, four-foot landscape and fence easement. I just want to make sure that that remains on the property, not within any easements where it's going to affect sightlines or anything else. And then there's a note as well that says road improvements as required by Wilson County Road Commission. That's, I said, that's Wilson, we're not the Wilson County Road Commission.
Nonville Road and that portion of the development does not belong to the city.
So we've been annexing some roads as of late. It'll be prudent for us to recommend to the BOC that the road at this portion be annexed into the city of Mount Jula?
I would have to check with my public works director, but we at the time were not in support of doing that unless there were improvements made based on what this development.
In your opinion, would Wilson County Road Commission allow this decel line?
I would, I would say probably so.
I would say they require it.
Yeah.
Great. They just, they hadn't been too excited about them. In some previous ones that we've done, we've put some conditions of such out there that they said no. So they don't always support, yeah.
Didn't we run into a similar issue with this a couple of months ago on Green Hill? In front of Mount Vernon, where county was requiring a turn lane, right? So is this a similar instance?
Yeah, we tried to put, that's hence the reason why I put the flashers on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did find the site distance exhibit, it was for 35 miles per hour.
How many?
35 miles per hour.
It meets 35, but doesn't meet 40?
So they, they only provided site triangles for 35 miles per hour. I do have site photos that show the available site distance, but without going out and taking a measurement on those, I can't.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the area, so I get it.
It's a very exact point that you lose site distance. And I could go get that measurement, but obviously that would not be for tonight.
Yeah, understood.
So as far as they want to safety issues.
Further questions, comments? Let's go ahead and open up to citizen comments this time. Any citizens wishing to make comment? Welcome, encourage to do so. Please cover the microphone, name and address for the record.
Running out.
You're running out of citizens. Yeah, golly. No citizen comments at this time. I'm looking for a recommendation to this item on our agenda.
Motion for a positive recommendation.
I'll second it.
The conditions stated.
May I add those conditions that I stated?
Please do.
Should I reiterate?
Yes.
That's the addition of marked street signs, both northbound and southbound, that include 24-hour-a-day flashing light indicative of the entrance. That the four-foot landscape and fence easement does not get into your site triangle, that it is terminated short of that. And I think that it would be prudent as well for us to include the same comment that we did on 11A, that the parcel is land swapped to the church and therefore it meets our qualifications for low-density.
Sorry, Chairman, I just want a clarification on the flashing beacons there. On Nonville, there is already the overhead flashing beacon that, it sounds like it belongs to the church. We couldn't determine who had ownership of that.
Yeah, the church does.
I would not recommend having both of those that close together. So that recommendation will require some coordination with the church.
Well, I want an overhead arm. I'm just talking about like a triangle, yellow sign.
Okay.
Flashers on it that says intersection ahead or whatever terminology that you guys turn ahead, dangerous intersection.
Okay, so pole-mounted.
Pole-mounted, yes, yes. No, not an arm sign. No, and yeah, the church does own that. I remember years ago where they had that and they, I'm pretty sure Pastor Bragg would say that they turn it on during church services and usually their services only.
So follow-up issue for the southbound approach, it's not our land.
Can we get it in easement? Oh, yeah, we don't annex the road? Well, maybe we could ask Wilson County Road Commission or we'd allow the developer to ask Wilson County Road Commission for their permission to put a sign in their right-of-way. Yeah, and if they don't, they don't, but I understand it's OPL. So other people's land. But I just think it'd be prudent of us to, let's put them in both directions right there as well. You do more roads than I do.
That was a little longer than them to the motion.
Yeah, just pole-mounted sign, just something to let people know.
I hesitate to even recommend it, but I'm thinking of adding also some entrance lighting as well.
Oh, I like entrance lighting, you know that. It's your motion. You may, you may add to it.
I'm going to add the entrance lighting as well.
Mr. Armstead, you support that?
Lighting is good.
Lighting's good.
That would be a motion and a second for a positive recommendation? All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions? Is a positive recommendation. Next item up on our agenda is also a recommendation item back to the board of commissioners. It is review the land use plan amendment from interstate commercial to mixed use for Golden Bear Place located off Beckwith Road. Would, do these need to be heard together, in your opinion? They could. Would the commission have any objection to hearing items 11C and 11D together? They both are on the same property, one is a land use plan amendment and the other would be the preliminary master development plan?
That's good.
Any objection? Seeing none? We will open that back up. We will be hearing item 11C, which is a recommendation item back to the board of commissioners to review the land use plan amendment from interstate commercial to mixed use for Golden Bear Place located off Beckwith Road. Also, we will be voting on, which is a recommendation item, back to the board of commissioners to review the preliminary master development plan, PUD with a rezone from RS40 to CMU PUD for Golden Bear Place located off Beckwith Road. Ms. Johnson?
Just to give you all a little back history, you've seen this as of recent. They just recently did a groundbreaking as of last week for Golden Bear Place. The intent with this major PUD amendment is they've done a couple of changes to the original PUD. The biggest being that they are intending of adding 5.85 acres of property that's to the northwest corner of this parcel. The reason for that is they are moving the senior living facility that was in the southeastern portion of the PUD to the northwestern portion of the PUD. And this will allow, this addition of the 5.85 acres will allow them the needed extra space in order to do that. The addition of this will supplement the senior living facility. They are moving it from what was originally section E to now section F. The land use plan does not support this. However, with it being added to the PUD, it would be a positive addition and it falls in suit with what was previously approved for the PUD in its original form. They have also removed Area B because a portion of Area B had the possibly proposed in-and-out. I don't want to say it has been proposed because we've not yet received a site plan. Y'all did however approve a commercial design standard waiver last month. So there is anticipation that they will be submitting soon, but we have no guarantees. So Area B originally had the parking lot portion for in-and-out and did not incorporate the remainder of the building. So they have since removed Area B in its entirety from the PUD. So the land use map request is interstate commercial to commercial mixed use. Again, the land use does not support it, but it does fall in line with what y'all have previously approved for this PUD. The zoning currently for the addition of the 5.85 acres was low-density residential. They are requesting the zoning of commercial mixed-use PUD, which again falls in line with the entire PUD in itself.
Comments on the land use amendment? And I'm going to defer to Todd because there's a lot of roadway stuff on associated with this one.
Thank you. So most of the off-site improvements with the PUD amendment remain. We're talking median on Golden Bear getting extended down to the interchange. Acceleration, oh, sorry, that's the one we're removing. Signalization at the main intersection noted that that might, may be removed once the Lowery property develops. The roundabout, of course, at the intersection of what's now going to be Old Beckwith Road and Collector Road to be named later. The lanage for that appears to be single-lane roundabout while the prior PUD called for a southbound right-turn bypass lane, that just, it wasn't oriented. And those are the big changes. I mean, there's going to, what you see here is going to get cleaned up as they work through the actual, like, roadway design process. But what we're removing besides that right-turn lane on, right turn lane on on old on Beckwith Road. We are also removing for an acceleration lane at the signal. Quite frankly, I don't know how that would have worked. So we're just we're taking that out. And if the signal is removed with future development, we can add an acceleration lane once it's an unsignalized intersection. But that buys us time to determine what the best overall design of this intersection for the corridor is.
There are a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Questions or comments from the commission? Let's go ahead and ask for representation, microphone. Basically, the one person left in the crowd.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record.
Joe Addicks, C S D G, twenty-three oh five Klein. Appreciate staff. As I mentioned, this is really just cleaning up and as the developments move forward, some of the items have wanted to move around, slide additional acreage to the north on the north end of the P U D boundary to allow the senior living site. If y'all remember, it was backed by the auction. Brings it up towards Old Beckwith. One thing that I think Jill did touch on with this with this P U D amendment, we're actually reducing the overall residential density we originally have proposed. So we're we're going from three hundred and seventy apartments to two hundred and eighty-two. We're increasing the number of townhomes from a hundred and three to a hundred and twenty-seven. We are also requesting to remove the age restricted designation from the townhome portion. And then we are reducing the number of units in the senior living facility from a hundred and eighty-seven to a hundred and seventy. So that drops your residential component from six hundred and sixty units to five hundred and seventy-nine as part of this amendment. Todd mentioned most of the traffic improvements have been memorialized previously. Though, you know, we've gone through those at length with the original approval, which hasn't been that long ago. Just some minor cleanup items as as we fine tune the final design, which we are in agreement with. One thing, and believe me, I've already apologized to staff for this one. One thing that has come up today is a request from the developer to amend the previously approved variance number three, which was a thirty percent material waiver for the for the development to the commercial design standards. They would like to request language that this body has recently approved for the multifamily residential in the senior living building exterior facades to contain a minimum mix of forty percent brick, thirty percent hardy plank, thirty percent board and batten and or metal. But the use of vinyl strictly prohibited. McFarland Farm comes to mind where that was recently approved.
Say it one more time?
McFarland.
No, 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 no.
Oh. The multifamily residential and senior living or senior housing buildings exterior facades will be a mix of forty percent brick, thirty percent hardy plank, thirty percent board and batten and or metal. No vinyl will be used.
So sixty percent hardy. Because board and batten's hardy.
Could be.
Yeah.
Right.
Could say just different stuff. Instead of lap, you're gonna do board back.
It's a sixty percent variance to the to the primary material.
We granted sixty percent at McFarland?
That is the language. As I understand it, that's the language from McFarland's.
Do these gotta be sprinkled?
Yeah.
These townhomes gotta be sprinkled by building code?
I, yes.
Townhomes?
One. Townhomes would be excluded from that material waiver. That is just for the apartment building in the senior living building. We would maintain.
Appears and show me which areas that is going.
Yeah, we would maintain the original thirty percent waiver for the townhomes. So the the request before you would be for this area and this area, those two only. Which would be areas D and E. No, sorry, not E, exclude the D and F.
What page are you on?
C, I mean, C one oh two. Or you can look at C one oh one.
C one oh one.
So probably better.
Yeah.
Okay. So D, D one and F?
Yep. Correct.
And what's going there?
Uh, D one is the mixed use apartments and commercial mixed use commercial apartment site. F is the assisted living or senior living site. And E would be the townhomes. And to answer your question, yes, the townhomes will be sprinkled based on your current fire code, which anything over one unit that is attached has to be sprinkled within the city of Mount Jewell.
Did we? Did we give sixty percent?
I'm trying to review right now. From what I've seen, looking back on the P M D P approval, it says fifty. But um, give me just a minute. I'm trying to do a little bit of refreshing. I just don't have the direct plans in front of me.
Okay. Yeah, on a normal house, it's not a it's a big of a deal, but when you're going vertical like that, it does become, it's really what you're gonna see is gonna be the hardy because you're not gonna put brick over hardy, you're gonna put hardy over brick. So really, the elevation standpoint is not really being improved, it's being taken down a notch. Questions, comments? Or or continue?
Joe, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Yeah, I and again, I apologize. And again, John, Jill, I'm sorry that it came up this afternoon on the on the material waiver. But again, I think I think as far as public works and engineering and traffic, I think we all understand what we need to do here. Planning wise, I think everybody's in good shape. We just had to request one additional variance.
Outside of the design waiver variance, what kicked this in today?
The the additional acreage for the senior site on the north end and then I think y'all remember back during the original P U D process, the the area that we were calling area B was split. There's there was some back and forth on whether the adjacent property owner was gonna be part of the P U D and then not ultimately decided not to be part of the P U D. And now you have a national tenant looking to buy a piece of both the from two property owners. In talking with staff, said, look, whatever makes it easier on y'all, we'll we'll help you out. I think everybody agreed to be easier just to remove area B from the P U D. It's easier.
Yeah.
Right.
Then to just lots of work around the floodplain and trying to
That's right.
navigate that.
Yep.
I've got two comments.
Please.
When we first saw this, my first heartburn was that senior living way back in the corner by the auto auction. That that bothered me to death and I knew it was nothing we could give you a negative vote for, but it bothered me to death that it was way back there and I'm glad you moved it up closer to where it's more accessible. And I guess the second comment that it's senior living and it's considered fifty-five plus, that bothers me too. On a personal note.
He passed in twenty-three. The Board of Commissioners just determined the proposed elevations to allow seventy percent brick and stone and thirty percent cementous siding. On the P M D P. So I'm not sure where they're getting those numbers from this, but this is from the ordinance.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay.
So maybe a fifty fifty. It's kind of what we're doing over there. And that's wouldn't be, to me, I like the change in the elevation, the ability to get creative with it. And yeah, board and batten and hardy, it's just you're just saying, I'm not gonna do lap, I'm gonna do some board and batten. She does look better. Be nice some Tudor panel mixed in there maybe to create three different designs or three of your most popular hardy designs in there, but basically, that would be sixty hardy, forty brick and on a tall elevation, that just means you're burying your brick and exposing your hardy. So I'd like to see that brick come up a little bit and maybe fifty percent is a little bit happier compromise on that.
Good with that.
Questions, comments? Please.
There was an additional change to the infrastructure requested. The current P U D calls for a median on that new road between Golden Bear Gateway and Beckwith Road. The development team has requested that that be removed based on the lineage they're providing. Public Works is requesting that it remains. Just based on the anticipated traffic volumes on that road and with it being in between the roundabout and the signal. Full access driveways seem cumbersome. That would shift get their access to that those drive-through parcels on that western edge onto Beckwith Road north of the roundabout. And the the median condition is included in the existing P U D.
And that divided median. Sorry, I gotta get to where I can see the road names.
The road has no name. It's currently being shown as a two-way left turn lane. But the the development team is is requesting that two-way left turn lane in lieu of median.
Okay, there. Chair Arena.
Median is staff preference, yes.
Joe, you want to speak to that?
The access to the two parcels, though, Todd, you're in agreement to be right in, right out?
Yeah. It works.
That'll work. Yeah. Gooder.
There you go. Questions, comments from the commission? Thank you. Let's call for citizen comments. Joe, you're the only citizen here. See no citizen comments this time. I'm looking for a recommendation in regards to this item on our agenda. A motion for a positive recommendation. The design waiver to be fifty fifty, fifty percent hardy, fifty percent brick on the design waiver. So we would not be granting the waiver for the divided median. Is that correct, Todd? We would not be granting that waiver or change on the plan for the divided median. We'd be keeping it, but with the right in, right out access points.
Correct. And that would be It's not official requested variance. I just came up with their responses to the
So we're gonna leave the divided median, but make them right in, right out would?
Yes.
Okay. That comment, that capture everything from public works plus comments on here?
Yeah.
Okay. We captured everything from planning? That would be my recommendation.
Second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against, abstentions is a positive recommendation. With that being said, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion? I'm gonna second that one. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against, abstentions. We are adjourned.